A lot of barriers, challenges, and that they're going to be more successful in their current court case and more successful avoiding future court involvement if they are able to address some of those barriers. So a lot of our work also includes identifying people's needs, identifying great resources in this great community to kind of help people with the support they need. That can include nonprofits in the community, connecting to our Thurston County Resource Hub to help people get kind of additional support that they might be needed as they navigate the criminal legal system and again, hopefully avoid future involvement in the system. Our staff are, have lots of experience working in a lot of different contexts and are really deeply committed to this maintaining public safety, fairness, and justice for everyone involved in the criminal justice system, from those who are accused of a crime, those who have been committed of a crime, crime victims. We work with all of those people on a daily basis and really helping everyone be successful as they navigate the court system and avoid future involvement in the system. So, thank you for recognizing the work of these great professionals. Again, pretrial and probation both play a really important role in our criminal legal system and happy to have that acknowledged this week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions or comments for Carrie?
No.
Really appreciate it. I think we have a pretty unique department in Thurston County. So, I think it plays a really important role in our system and appreciate you and your team's work.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, very good. Next, we are joined by the, we have the next consent proclamation for this meeting, Disability Pride Month, and we are joined by the coordinator of the Thurston-Mason Developmental Disabilities Coalition, Michelle O'Dell, who has a couple of guests.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle Odell. I'm here with the Thurston-Mason DDA Coalition, and I have my son here with me, Nathan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. On behalf of our Thurston-Mason Developmental Disability Coalition and the broader disability community, thank you for your proclamation recognizing July as Disability Pride Month. Your commitment to inclusion sends a powerful message that people with disabilities are not only seen but valued, and that their voices and contributions are essential to our communities. Our coalition, a proud partner of the Ark of Washington, works year-round to build a more inclusive and supportive environment for people with developmental disabilities and their families. We train self-advocates to share their personal stories with legislators, foster long-term relationships, and push for policies that reflect the real needs of our community. Each year, we host the South Sound Legislative Forum to evaluate those voices and priorities in a shared public space. Beyond advocacy, we also help families navigate the complex support systems that surround developmental disabilities, whether it's accessing DDA services, understanding educational rights, or finding Adult Day and employment programs. We share information, resources, and guidance so that families don't feel lost or alone. In partnership with our county developmental disabilities program, we also support law enforcement training through the Is It Something Else initiative through Project Safer. This effort helps first responders better understand developmental disabilities and encourages compassionate, informed responses in the field. Thank you again, Commissioners, for your leadership and your partnership. And now, I'm honored to introduce Cole Lyman, a dedicated self-advocate who will share what Disability Pride Month means to him in his own words.
Good af- Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Cole Lyman speaking. I am 24 years old. I was born in Olympia and attended Capital High School, Transition Academy, and Project Search. I have autism and was fortunate to have supportive family, teachers, and paraeducators throughout my education. They encouraged me to advocate for myself, and I would like to advocate for others. I am here today in support of Disability Pride Month. This year's theme is "We Belong Here and We Are Here to Stay." Did you know that one in four people in the U.S. have a disability? People in my community want to feel heard, accepted, and included. We appreciate being included in conversations that may affect us, such as healthcare, employment opportunities, supportive living, and our interest. I especially like to have conversations and socialize. Examples of important social organizations that are inclusive are Thurston County Specialized Recreation, Thurston County Inclusion, Hubby Bird Studios, and Thurston County Special Olympics. They provide a variety of recreational activities for all ages where we can feel heard, accepted, and included. Likewise, Transition Academy and Project Search and employment organizations like Morningside help many in my community obtain meaningful employment, all of which helps my community feel that we truly belong and we need them to stay here with us. Thank you for listening and have a good day.
All right. Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention, you mentioned the South Sound Legislative Forum, and I was, had the pleasure of attending that this year, and it was really interesting. Like, I really appreciate you guys doing that. It was not like what you think it is. I thought it was going to be questions for legislators and them trying to navigate a world they don't know that well. It was, it was really the opposite. It was people bringing stories forward and complexities, issues, and legislators just listening to learn that those complexities. I thought that was really valuable. So, thank you.
I hope you'll all join us this next fall.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas to all.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next up is public comment, and we have two public comment periods pursuant to our new structure. This public comment period relates to items that are on today's agenda. I don't have anyone signed up for this piece. Is there anyone that didn't get to sign up that wanted to comment on an item on today's agenda?
Yeah.
Other items will come at the, toward the end of the meeting, so you'll be, you'll have a chance, Mr. Jacobson. Okay, so with that, we'll move to the county manager's update.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Then we'll jump right to our consent agenda. There were 16 items, although one we had removed. So there's really 15 items. It's one through 16 with number two excluded. And so is there a motion or any request to remove an additional item from consent? Okay, is there a motion to approve this agenda?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the 15 items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So that brings us right to department items. We have tabled one and two pursuant to the pre, to the motion we did at the beginning of the meeting. So we're up to item three, which is homeless services contract with Department of Commerce. And we have our Public Health Director here.
Yes, hello. Jen Freihite, Public Health Director. This is a request for the board to approve the inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for homeless services funding for approximately $25,313,372. The period of performance for the contract is for two years, from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2027. Funds from this contract will be awarded to local homeless service providers via recommendations from the Regional Housing Council.
Any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the inter-agency agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce for homeless services funding for approximately $25,313,372, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this inter-agency agreement. Any discussion? I'll just say that the, if the public would like to get a window into the complexity of, and the process that goes into all this, tune into our agenda-setting meeting this morning, right around just before 10:00 a.m., where there was about an hour's worth of discussion about the ins and outs of all of this. So, pretty informative, probably. I think we had a good discussion. No other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is 2025 homeless services contracts.
Yes, thank you. This is a request for the board to approve housing contracts with 17 mostly nonprofit organizations to fund 49 different projects for a combined total estimated amount of $14,696,319 for the 2025-26 program year. Public Health and Social Services issued a consolidated request for proposals, RFP, on January 17, 2025, with applications due February 28, 2025. Funding sources included in the RFP include the Consolidated Homeless Grant, CHG, Housing and Essential Needs, HEN, eviction prevention rent assistance, emergency housing fund, homeless services fund, or HCHSF, HB 5386, and local home funds.
Any questions for Dr. Freihite? Is there a motion?
Move to approve housing contracts with 17 nonprofit organizations to fund 49 projects for a combined total estimated amount of $14,696,319 for the 2025-2026 program year, and authorize the public, the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not change the approved dollar amount or duration for each contract by more than 10%.
Second.
Motion is second to approve these homeless services contracts with 17 nonprofit organizations. Discussion on that motion?
Yes. I just want to go on the record. This one, I'm, I'm, I have more reservations with, and we talked, like Commissioner Mensor mentioned, we talked about this at length in our work session, so I encourage folks to, to watch that. But, this is, as I understand it, and I'm not very smart, but I'm trying, there's several pots of money that come in and get essentially braided together and combined. Within this pot of money, there's approximately 1.5 million that comes from the home fund, which is a, is a locally levied tax off of sales tax dollars throughout the county, which can be used for various things that are used to support folks that are experiencing homelessness or, you know, in poverty. And there has been a request from some of the other local jurisdictions after some of the right-of-way funding has been lost, that we look for ways to help support their ongoing operations of specifically, and I have to get this right, Quince Village and Plum Street Village? Are those the?
And Unity Commons.
And Unity Commons. So, there are other jurisdictions asking for, for funds to support things, or people will be possibly kicked out of these places or left homeless. At the conversation we had earlier, I, I asked the board that we hold up on the 1.5 million in home funds, because that's discretionary, that's available until after we take this action, in which it will be tied up, and the, the communities that are asking for help may not be able to get that help from the county and from the locally levied sales tax funds after that point. So I do have reservations with this one. We had a lot of good conversation and debate about it earlier, this, earlier today. We've talked about it several times throughout the, the year, and it has been, it has been asked that we take a regional kind of reprioritization as there was potential for right-of-way funding being lost and these programs being threatened. We're at that point. You know, I'll, I'll support what the majority of the board wants, and I'll, and I'll vote in line, but I just want to go on record saying that I have concerns that after today, we won't be able to help those people.
A question that kind of flows from your comments. Because those monies get thrown into one bucket, it wouldn't be possible, like, you would, to hold up the 1.5 million, you'd have to hold up all of the contracts, right? Because there's, they're not-
Correct.
Specifically allocated by stream to project.
Correct.
Okay. Just to, just, that was another consideration that led to-
Well, we could take two weeks to look at that and figure that out. We could.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I will call for the vote on item, item four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is item five, Developmental Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement, also Public Health and Social Services.
Yes, thank you. This is a request for the board to approve the county program agreement between Thurston County and the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services, Developmental Disabilities Administration, in the amount of $7,629,171 for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. I'm here to answer any questions.
I move to approve county program agreement number 2563-63358 with the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services Developmental Disabilities Administration in the amount of $7,629,171 for the term of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign this agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, last one for Public Health and Social Services is professional services.
Yes.
Is that correct, is it? Oh, it is. Did we remove the lake issue?
That was on consent.
Huh?
That was on consent.
Oh, it was on consent. Okay.
This is the money going out.
Got it. Professional services agreements for supported employment, high school transition, job foundation, and community inclusion services.
Thank you. This is a request for the board to approve the Thurston-Mason County Developmental Disabilities Professional Services Agreements with Career Quest, Centerforce, Exceptional Foresters, Morningside, and VOTIS for a combined total of $7,629,171 to provide supported employment, high school transition, job foundation, and community inclusion services for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. I'll answer any questions.
Questions on the professional services agreements? Ready for motion?
Move to approve the Thurston-Mason County Developmental Disabilities Professional Services Agreements with Career Quest, Centerforce, Exceptional Foresters, Morningside, and VOTIS. Am I saying that right?
Mm-hmm.
VOTIS. For a combined total of $7,629,171 to provide supported employment, high school transition, job foundation, and community inclusion services for the term of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, and to authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the agreements and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to approve these agreements. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, Mr.-
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works is next, under seven. One, contract award for Washington State Department of Transportation, US 101 Schneider Creek Project. Marcus Dorvik.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcus Dorvik, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works. Public Works is requesting the board award a contract for the construction of WashUS 101 Schneider Creek Project, number 70007, to Black Hills Excavating Incorporated of Olympia, Washington, in the amount of $611,272. A total of three bids were received on May 30, 2025, with Black Hills Excavating Incorporated submitting the low responsive bid. This project includes stormwater retrofits along the median and both shoulders to manage and treat runoff from two and a half acres of US Highway 101 near the Steepoat Island Road Northwest exit. Project funding comes from the Washington State Department of Transportation annual stormwater fees to Thurston County, which can only be used for stormwater improvements that manage runoff from Wash dot right-of-way. Construction is anticipated to begin next month, and I'm happy to take in questions.
Questions for Marcus? Is there a motion?
Move toward the contract for WSDOT US 101 Schneider Creek Project, CP number C7007, to Black Hills Excavating, Inc. of Olympia, Washington, in the amount of $611,272, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, for up to 10% of the contract.
Second.
Motion is second to award the contract to Black Hills Excavating. Discussion on that motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Last department item is seven-two, contract award for Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest Bridge.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Keaton Forbes Kishani, Senior Civil Engineer, Public Works. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners to award the contract for Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest Bridge and Intersection Improvements Project to Quig Bros. Incorporated of Aberdeen, Washington, in the amount of $2,932,569. Five bids were received for this project, and Quig Bros. was the lowest responsive bidder. Public Works has received $2,262,460 in federal funding, and the remaining costs will be funded with transportation impact fees. The, this project improves both mobility and safety at the intersection of Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest, and replaces a structurally deficient L5 bridge over Bloom Stitch. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kevin?
Move to award the contract for the Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest Bridge and Intersection Improvements Project, CP 61320, to Quig Brothers, Inc. of Aberdeen, Washington, in the amount of $2,932,569, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, for up to 10% of the contract, $293,257, or an aggregate of $3,225,826.
Second.
Motion is second to approve and award the contract to Quig Brothers, Inc. of Aberdeen, Washington. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Commissioner, Commissioners' Community Reports is next. Commissioner Klaus.
Can you come back to me, sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Over the last several weeks, we, I attended some things, and I'll just kind of read those out. Boards and Commissions, attended the EMS Council Meeting, Transportation Policy Board Meeting, Pac Mountain, or the statewide meetings and count federal meetings that I'm involved in. Attended the Healthy Counties Advisory Board Meeting for NACO, or the National Association of Counties, and also the Criminal Justice Treatment Account statewide meeting. Community events. Went to Steady and got to see the new community garden in Buickota, which was really cool. If you have not checked that out, you should check out that. And I attended the Sweet Day in Rochester, a media ribbon cutting and for Thurston, or for TC Media. Was in the Independence Day Parade for Tim Water, which was really fun. It was really, I just want to mention that the parade was really, really attended, and it was just really neat to see everybody out on the Fourth of July. So thanks for making that fun, everybody. And, and also have attended the Yelm Chamber Forum. Few other things that I did over the, the break that we had, participated in the jail space crisis work group. The prosecuting attorney officially launched, launched a dashboard of data and was able to attend that. Went on a private tour of Wolf Haven, attended and, or met with Commissioner Klaus and Mahia. We went and checked out the Nisqually Tribe's equine assisted services, which was really quite neat. Attended the Innovative Justice Meeting, a local restaurant meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, connected with Patty Mary's staff and other behavioral health staff, and then toured, did a tour of Long Lake with Planning Commissioner Eric Casino, and learned quite a bit about the Lake Management District in Long Lake. I also attended yesterday's budget meeting, and then spent a few days at the Local Progress National Convention in Chicago, where I joined over 500 other county commissioners, city council people, and board members, and talking about local challenges that we're facing across the country. And that is mine.
Excellent. Commissioner Foner?
Had a tour with Congresswoman Strickland and Commissioner Mahia and the EDC at the Ag Park in Tenino, and we talked about kind of next phase there. Went and spoke at the Youth Leadership Thurston County Elected Officials Panel with several other elected officials from Thurston County. That was a lot of fun. Attended a retirement party for Olympia's Communications Director, Kelly Brassith. It was a, it was a really touching ceremony. Her brother came from Pocatello, Idaho, and he was, used to be the Evergreen State College President, I believe, and he sang a song about Kelly that was pretty neat. Ribbon cutting for the new museum downtown. I suggest everybody go take a look at that. They did a really nice job displaying a lot of local history. Experience Olympia and Beyond's new director meet and greet was held and attended that. Went on a Hillside Farms tour with fine-looking gentlemen in the audience. Thank you for giving the tour. I wasn't talking about you, John. IAC meeting, Internal Audit Committee, and then attended the mayor's forum, and then had a meeting with the governor's staff. So, a lot going on.
Ready, Commissioner Foner? Yep. Go for it. Thank you. So, I did a lot during the summer recess, but I will just highlight a few key meetings and events. I did, well, the Regional Housing Council held a meeting. There was a Wastin Recovery Center tour that I think most Commissioners did, and my executive aide was able to attend that. I think I have one coming up, but I wasn't able to attend the group one, so I'm looking forward to being able to do that. I met with a few of our state representatives, including Senator Claire Wilson, Representative Lisa Partially, and Representative Beth Dolio. I also attended the Prosecuting Attorney's Office data dashboard launch, which was really interesting. I learned a lot, and I strongly encourage any community members who are interested to check out the data dashboard online. It's live and available to look at. If you're interested, you can kind of track the case flow of charges and crimes happening in Thurston County, as well as a breakdown of, like, by jurisdiction, what's happening in each jurisdiction and what public safety resources are available in each jurisdiction in the county. So, it, it's a really interesting tool, and I look forward to hearing community feedback when people are able to use that. I also attended the reentry simulation and reflection event at the Washington State Capitol. That event was really cool. It was like, not what I expected, but it was a lot of fun. It was like a real-life Monopoly game almost. Like, they had different stations set up throughout the room, and you got like your bus tickets, and you had to use a bus ticket every time you stopped at a table, and we all got our own packet of like, you know, your name is so-and-so, and you just got released on these charges, and this is your living situation. You're unhoused, you live at the shelter, or you live with a partner that was your penpal while you were incarcerated, and you have to pay this much in rent. And so it was really interesting. A couple county employees were there too, but it really kind of showed a really, really, really small glimpse into how difficult it can be to navigate life when you are outside of the system. A lot of people who are there do have lived experience, and it was a cakewalk for them. They had, like, set up this perfect, you know, trajectory for themselves to accomplish everything in their packet because they knew exactly what to hit first. But for a lot of people, it was complicated and quite shocking. You know, you wait in this long line to go get your ID, finally get to the front, and you're given a form, and you have to go back to the end of the line to start again, and you get, you know, I went to jail a couple times for missing appointments and stuff, so I think I was in jail with one of our judges. So, that was pretty interesting. But it was a really good, a real experience, a good learning opportunity for a lot of people, and I look forward to attending again next year. And then at the end, we had some really meaningful table conversations about ways that we can improve the system and barriers that our constituents are facing in our local community and abroad. So, it was a really good event.
And you were like, I don't need a bus ticket, we're zero fare.
We had a county employee that I won't name who was stealing and then selling bus tickets to other people. And so that was pretty interesting. Between, like, each week, we would stop and have the opportunity to talk to the facilitator, and we had a county employee boasting about breaking the law and not going to jail every week, and so that was, that was pretty funny. But, no, I didn't say that we have free bus fare. I should have said that. But, let's see, what's next? I attended the Homes First Welcome Home and Ribbon Cutting Event in June, and I also attended Capital City Pride, where I was able to get a bench warrant check from our Public Defense Office and learn that I have no bench warrants outstanding, so that's good news.
Nice.
Um, I-
I didn't know you were doing that.
Yeah, no, it was pretty cool. Anyone could just stop by and get checked to see if they have warrants, so that was a pretty cool service for them to be providing at Capital City Pride. Let's see, I also, over this last weekend, attended the Patterson Lake Annual Flotilla and Picnic. That was a lot of fun. My nephew and I got to ride on one of their boats, and it was just pretty cool. We all went around the whole lake together and then had a picnic afterwards. So it's always really nice to be able to connect with that community. I attended a facility tour of the Thurston County Jail. That was my first time touring the facility with the new chief of the jail. And so I learned quite a bit about the way that things are being operated, and it was a really good opportunity to connect with them. And the last thing I'll highlight is the meeting with the Thurston County area restaurants that Commissioner Grant also attended, and Commissioner Mahia was there as well, and we had the opportunity to learn from local business owners, primarily, actually, I think- I think exclusively in the downtown Olympia area. So, um, it was a perspective that was, you know, shared amongst the business owners who were there, um, but I'm interested in learning more about perspectives of business owners in all areas of the county. Um, it seems like there are some really specific and unique challenges that, um, the restaurant owners in downtown Olympia perceive, um, but there was some conversation around what other jurisdictions face, and there seems to be a perception that, uh, owning a restaurant is different depending on where you're at, um, which is, you know, probably valid, but there were a lot of comments made about, um, things going on in the city of Olympia right now related to, um, some considerations for workers in Olympia. And I know we've talked about that a little bit here, but it was just really interesting to hear directly from the restaurant owners, uh, about how some of those considerations might impact them, and it just, uh, I left with an impression that there is an opportunity for learning for a lot of people on these various issues that affect some of our residents really closely. Um, and that's it. That's the last thing I had on my list.
Okay, oh, thank you, Commissioner Klaus. Uh, I attended the Jail Space Crisis Work Group. I attended the Juneteenth Event at Osho Community Center. I attended a West Olympia Business Association Event. I attended a fundraising event for the Harlequin Theater downtown. I attended the Steady Meeting. I attended the Three Cities Meeting. I went to the Swede Day Coronation in Rochester for the, um, Swede Day Princesses. Um, Thurston County Media had a ribbon cutting for their new space renovations. The PAO Data Dashboard Launch, Dashboard Launch that the other Commissioners talked about, I was, went to that. I was on the, the Leadership Thurston County Youth Panel with Commissioner Fornier and Commissioner Mahia. Alliance for Healthy South Sound Executive Committee met. Um, Homes First had a ribbon cutting event at their Tom Water Home, the museum, the Haha Museum that Commissioner Fornier mentioned, I was there. Was also invited to speak at the Timberland Regional Library, grand reopening of the Tom Water Branch. They have all-new space, it's really cool, it was a huge turnout. Um, that was awesome. Griffin Neighborhood Association Annual Picnic, uh, big event that happens in my, uh, district every, every summer. Uh, Capital City Pride Weekend Events, didn't do a lot, but was able to catch a little bit. Um, had a meeting with, uh, it was in the Tom Water Parade, Sentencing Guideline Commission Meeting, Mayor's Forum Meeting, met with Representatives of TCAT regarding comp plan issues, and another meeting, uh, regarding, um, immigration enforcement in Thurston County, just sort of an information sharing of what's going on so we can tell our residents the right information. So, that was about it for me. Um, besides the ten hours I spent in mine at the Orkut Island. I said it was fourteen. Fourteen-hour trip home. Ten hours just sitting there in the parking lot, waiting to get on a ferry. Um, so, that was fun. All right. So, we are now to public comment. For any general matter, I have some folks signed up, and I will call for anyone who didn't sign up. First up is Frank Gregory Berson.
Uh, I do go by Greg.
Greg, perfect.
So, did each of you receive the packet?
I have.
That came from yesterday. Can I approach and give you...
Approach the clerk, and she will distribute whatever you got.
Copying.
Yeah, there was email, and then there was a printout and...
About the storm water issue?
Yes. Yes, sounds like we all got it.
Okay. So, I'm here to talk about, uh, the property, uh, two, three, four, five Sherem Loop Northwest. Uh, I'm the owner, it goes back in our family, probably till the nineteen-sixties. We've continuously had problems with the storm water. For some reason, the county has not connected us to where the water goes down to the bay. It's right across the street. It, uh, an easy fix would be just to put a catch basin or two in and to run it over to where it flows out, but they haven't done that. We've experienced, uh, since two thousand nine, three bank failures. The most recent one this year, uh, took out the Bulkhead. Very difficult to try to replace anything down below because the water continues to flow over from the storm water runoff. And, you know, we, we've reached out for years. In, in the pictures, you can see, back in nineteen ninety-nine, we brought it to the county extension, and in those pictures, you can see the mud up at the top, just off of the road. Well, that mud's right down at the top of our bank, right before the, um, the failures. In two thousand ten, I believe, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the county came out and put a berm. The berm did not stop the storm water run. Uh, there's two links I put in for YouTube that you can watch. The water runs down, and then down our neighbor's driveway, and then over to us, and then down to the bank. The berm also stops the water from the road for about three lots as it goes down, and then it, it goes down to the end of the berm, and like a hose, it just empties onto our property. Why the, why the, uh, why the county didn't install it all the way past us? I don't know. They installed it midway in the property and then just let the water go around. If you come out, I'll show you where the soil's sinking.
I'm sorry, does that mean we've hit four minutes? Okay, if you could just kind of conclude, you have four minutes, or three minutes, sorry. And then we've got your real...
We would just like you to come out with all the different agencies of the county. We need to find a solution before the house collapses. I look at the vision, and I, I see Thurston County is a vibrant community, ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of generations to live, work, and play. We're concerned the house is going to go down. We're concerned people are going to lose their lives because of this storm water issue.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
County Manager, did, I know you and I touched base on this issue, is there anything that you could report on status?
Yes, Chair. Um, on May seventh, two thousand twenty-five, our Risk Management Department issued a letter, um, to Mr. Berson, and they concluded that the runoff originated from a neighboring property and was not necessarily runoff that was created by the county. So, that letter was issued, again, to, um, Mr. Berson.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yep, we'll send it out.
Thank you. John Pettit's next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit, I live on Rich Rod.
John, can I, if you indulge me for a moment, since we didn't have any comment up front, I didn't really do the advisements. I know you know the rules, but I have a couple other folks, so just real quickly, um, it's three minutes, time may not be donated to other speakers. Introduce yourself, clear in the area of county in which you reside, address the board, not audience or staff, silence your cell phones. Uh, we can restrict a person's right to address the board for good cause. No comments that are allud offensive, inflammatory, discriminatory, uh, no commercial, um, promotion of businesses, uh, and withhold remarks about pending land use permits that could come before the board on appeal. Um, so, anyway, just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay.
This Pettit, you've got three minutes. He said, reset of time.
So, I, um, I also had a couple different activities that happened over the, your break. Not every, not every county person gets a nice break like that, time-wise, but one of the things I got to do was I got to be on jury duty. Now, I didn't actually end up serving because we never ended up having a spot, but I will tell you, I think that the lack of maintenance that has occurred at the current courthouse has pretty much wiped it out. I mean, you've been here for years, and there has been nothing done there to actually improve anything. I thought you were going to start a five-million-dollar project. To start something, it is horrendous. And keep in mind, you're talking about a person, as a teenager, I actually went in there during construction with my father, was the county commissioner, and watched it being built. It, uh, it's very disturbing to know that we don't take care of our buildings. And then when I was growing up, I learned that if, if you don't take care of something, you don't get to get anything new to replace it. So, I think you might have a hard sell to convince the public that they should be spending any money on any new facilities. Now, um, I do know that the county and, uh, through different circumstances, I was notified about, a little action about talking about doing some more courthouse possibilities, and, uh, one of the spots that was suggested might be down, you know, over Olympia area there, which reminds me of a, a process we went through a few years back, but I don't think many of you actually know about how much of the area of Olympia is fill. And you know, we're all waiting for that big earthquake, and we're talking absolute liquefaction, even where the old City Hall is and all through that zone was filled with millions of yards of fill, and it's all projected. So, you might go to a liquefaction map, and you'll get to find out it's not a stable area to think about putting something. Then, of course, there's the cost. Well, I mean, we were trying to slip it in for only a mere two fifty, three hundred million dollars last time. Thurston County has major financial problems. We know that. And having major financial problems doesn't get better. And I will tell you that many people don't know it, but the average home here in Thurston County as far as county tax, they pay about three hundred and seventy dollars a year towards the county general fund tax, which means that for each one of your salaries, it takes four hundred houses in order to just pay your salary as Commissioners. That's individually. So, there's two thousand houses. I know my time's up, but before we spend any more money, let's do something else. Let's get the public involved rather than working behind the scenes. Thank you.
Steve Marshall.
I live at seventy-two forty-six Holmes Island Road along Lake. I am Greg's brother-in-law, my wife is his sister. Uh, we lived out at that Sherem Loop property, uh, that Greg talked about in nineteen sixty-eight, uh, right after we were married. Uh, so, we know what the circumstances have been on that property. We've visited it a lot over the years. And what's happened is that the, the county has diverted water that flows from what we used to call the Schmidt Farm, uh, a, a large area up by the Sherem Loop Road, and it comes down, but the county has diverted that down, so now that it flows over, uh, that property. And as we found in Texas, a, a little rain is fine, a lot of rain causes problems. And the water, when it comes down, it heads toward a bank, which is a sheer bank, it looks out toward Boston Harbor. Uh, and it's like a knife, when you have extra water, cutting through that bank. And that's what happened when they lost the Bulkhead, and the fear that we have is that the house, which is set back from the bank, but not by a lot, um, it never had been, uh, will go. And so, what we want to do is we want to make sure that the county diverts the water that it has diverted all the way into a drain that goes straight out to the, the bay. And that's a safe way of doing it. It wouldn't cost much to connect the part where it's coming off of, of the Schmidt property to an existing drain, an existing line. So, thank you very much. By, by the way, I should add, I grew up in Olympia. Uh, we've come, we've moved back, we're here in retirement. Uh, it's a great place. My dad was city manager for thirty years, so I, I understand what you all have to do in balance, but, uh, this is a great place, we want to make it better.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Jacobson, you're up.
Hello, my name's Lawrence Jacobson. Some of you know me, some of you are probably tired of seeing me. Anyway, I'm here to talk about Claris Grove and the whole idea of a natural landmark. Do you all know about the project? It's been, okay, I didn't know, nobody's told me what the status is. So, I, 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 very true, I, I...
I'm not sure about it, no.
Oh, I made up a kind of a, a law, and it, it went someplace for a while, and then it sat there, and then, I, you know, it's not that important to people, but what I'm trying to do is save properties. My wife has this property, it belongs to all of us, and it has these beautiful old-growth trees on it, and it's just under an acre, and it's the last piece of her childhood on Case Road. And that's what gave me the idea that, you know, I don't have any grandkids or anything like that. So, whoever buys it next is going to cut those one hundred and fifty-year-old trees down once we're gone. And, and there's probably other people who would want to do the same kind of thing, and I've talked to, uh, let's see, what's his name? Risk Management, uh, oh, gosh, I just forgot his name, Brian? Yeah. And he's not, I don't, I, I couldn't get a feel whether he liked it or not, he said something about, uh, risks, that was it, and it was a different kind of risk. I mean, it's not like it, that doing this is going to make a tree fall over and hit a car, it was something about zoning, but I can't speak for him. But I, I haven't heard anything for a year or two, so I thought I'd better come in and see what you guys remember, or if you have any interest. I've been doing this for a lot of years, and, and I was in my youth when I started, and now I'm going to be eighty this year. So, I don't quit easily, I might not be too smart, but I just keep on plugging along and, and, uh, that's, that's my thing, you know? Where are we with it? So, thanks for listening, and...
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Uh, I will, I can follow up with you.
Okay.
I, I can say that Mr. Jacobson has come since I, the whole time I've been on the board, he had a proposal for a landmark program. We, we put it as an item on the docket to be considered, and it went for a couple different years on the preliminary docket, which is to say, we're not going to work on it, we're not putting it on the work plan, but we're not saying no, we're just like, we're going to get to it when we get, we finally kind of dug into it, it was one year, and I was, I'm looking at Josh, because you were there, I think it was maybe three years ago-ish, where we actually dug in, we had some staff do some work-ups on it. Could this work? Because the Commissioners had to, again, make the annual decision, do we put it on the work plan, or is it not a good idea? And what I recall was that there were a number of obstacles to the proposal that Mr. Jacobson had. We were brainstorming some, like, were there other paths to get him where he wanted to go through other mechanisms? There were some ideas there, but nobody knew exactly how they would work, like conservation easement donated to land trusts or things like that, that nature.
Too small.
And then, yeah, it's too small for them, but there was concerns of the county, like if we start a program like this, then we inherit all these little properties, and how do we manage them and deal with them? And there were things about it that were complex, that required funding, and, um, they were unknown, so it may still be sitting on the preliminary docket for all I know. And we didn't put it on, I know we never, it elevated it, I don't know whether we removed it. We can check. So, that's what we'll check on, and I'll follow back up with you.
Okay, well...
See, they're still sitting on the preliminary docket with some questions to be answered, or Commissioners may have decided to remove it because they, we didn't, we were basically being told by legal that this, the idea didn't seem to have a lot of strong possibility in moving.
We have so many people, you know, if you go down Ninety-third and you see a bunch of warehouses, that's my wife's, or she was a little, you know, she's here with cousins. It's all gone now, and here's somebody trying to save a piece of it for history and geography. There ought to be a way to do it, that's all.
No, I was a, I was trying to think, think of a way to make it happen, but we haven't quite got there yet.
Okay, well, I can, I don't know how many more years I'll be able to come back and bother you, but...
Understood. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thanks.
We'll follow up. Okay, anyone else that didn't get a chance to give testimony? And that concludes the second public comment period. Thank you all for sticking with us through the meeting, and we're adjourned.